I call to order the regular meeting of the Carabelle City Commission. It's Thursday, June 6, 2019, 6:00 PM, at the Carabelle City Hall. I would like to ask Commissioner Allen to please say the prayer and then we'll set the pledge of allegiance to the flag. So if you'll stand.
My God, Father of heaven, we're so grateful that we can come together tonight and deal with those things that pertain to this lovely city you've provided, given us the opportunity to be a part of. Ask to be with us in all wisdom and judgment that we might do that which is right and honorable and the sight of all. Especially, Father, are we mindful of those that are in town today in celebration of the D-Day? And we're mindful of all those families that have fought blood once in that great battle and the great war. We're grateful for the freedom that it brought us and the strength of this country. And we pray that it can continue to be a force of light for the world. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Fledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I almost forgot to say the pledge. The first time.
Indeed.
Oh, yeah, I know. Okay, so we have the consent agenda that has our May 2nd regular meeting minutes, and then the attorneys' invoices for March and April. Did everyone review those? And is someone ready for a motion regarding that?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, then. Anyone would like to make a second?
Second.
Okay, that's Commissioner Mathis, a motion. Commissioner Allen makes the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, it's public comment time. Do we have anyone who would like to make a public comment? Public comment? All right, we'll move on to the commissioners' reports. We have Commissioner Allen.
We don't have anything at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Mathis?
I have nothing.
All right, then, Commissioner Walden?
I have nothing, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Ellender?
Nothing in this room.
All right. I do have a report, but it's just one page. Okay, sorry. But the city has been awarded, and most of you probably have heard about it but not the public, another roadway improvement grant from the FDOT Small Communities Outreach Program, and the amount of, I'm guesstimating, the way I can see, is $878,583. And matching funds this time are not required. Some stormwater improvements will be included. The city began submitting grant applications for this area back in 2014. And in March of 2018, Russell and I reworked the application. We added four additional roadways to the original two that we had been applying for. And the FDOT kindly funded three of those road segments back in May. And that includes all of Southeast Fifth Street that runs north and south by Sands Park, and all of Southeast Avenue D from southeast Ninth Street headed west to southeast Third. And funding will be let after July 1st this year. In fact, it's going to be, we're expecting it to be let so soon that Courtney's going to have a resolution to talk about under her report. And Russell's ready to move forward, and I am. These roads are in extremely poor condition over there, and those improvements are needed desperately in that neighborhood. Then on May 23rd, Courtney and Russell and I attended a Northwest Florida Water Management District Committee meeting where they voted unanimously to amend the grant, add the NERTA grant, which is right at $3 million grant, $2,888, for Phase Two of the Lighthouse State Subdivision Septic Sewer Pavement of an additional 110 residences on top of the Phase One that we have now for 53 residences. And Russell asked for a deadline extension or explained why we needed a deadline extension on the original Phase One, and they awarded that extension. And I reviewed with them the city's ongoing efforts to obtain grant funding for the Phase One companion project, the waterline installation. Then Mr. Chris Shear with McDowell Housing called me last week to follow up regarding their loan application to Florida Housing for development of affordable workforce housing in Jordan Bayou subdivision. Mr. Shear said he and the McDowell Housing attorneys will meet with Florida Housing reps next week, and he will follow up regarding that outcome. He's also contacted Triumph Gulf Coast, and he's looking into tax credit financing for conversion of the old City Hall into assisted living. The city would need to partner with McDowell Housing for the Triumph application and submit that application from the city. And then if McDowell Housing looks into federal tax credits, if they decide to go for that type of a loan, it sounds as if the city would have to make a minimum dollar contribution around $20,000. But certainly, as this moves forward, if it does, Dan will be brought into it. And then Courtney and I are trying to schedule a meeting with the DOC Warden next week regarding signing another DOC-designated officer and work crew of Carabelle to replace the crew that was lost last month. And then I would like to request, as soon as Streets and Roads Department has time, and I see our only two Streets and Roads crew members are here, to clean up the POD distribution area there on the east side of the old City Hall building where the nest used to be. That is our designated point of distribution for emergency supplies. And it really needs to be mowed back and whatever, all of the paraphernalia is over there cleaned up, get dumpster over there, whatever you have to do to clean that place up. If the picnic table is good, leave it, or if you've got a spare picnic table, bring it over there. Something that will be comfortable and aid if we do have to have emergency supplies distributed from there. We want to make sure that the EOC has that address so that deliveries can be made to that area. And then Charlie is contracting with J.J. Strong for tanker fuel deliveries in the event of a disaster or hurricane, and he's making arrangements for short-term fuel supplies until a tanker can be on the scene. And I asked to meet with the chief next week to review the same topic about fuel supplies, short-term fuel supplies until a tanker can arrive. And then I do want to thank Officer Bryce Carlson and Chief Hunnings for their heroic work on May 25th to save the life of Mr. Joe Hightower. It sounds as if Mr. Hightower would have drowned if they had not spent all the hours of the night, wee hours of the morning, in the bay trying to rescue him. It sounds like y'all were in a small boat. I don't know what kind of boat you were in. And it's unfortunate that we have lost Officer Carlson, but he's moving on, so. And then the June 1st open house at the wastewater treatment plant, and the water treatment plant and Sands Park vacuum station was a success. I think you had about 25 people come, 22, 25, somewhere?
Something like that.
The treatment plants were beautiful, and the vacuum station, they look like showrooms. And Charlie, Justin, and Jared were very familiar with the facilities. They gave educational briefings and very informative tours. And I've gotten some compliments about that. And then, once again, I'm going to send a thank you to my husband, Greg, for his volunteer work to the city. He spent last weekend constructing and hanging the frames of the sign behind us. This sign was a temporary sign in the front of the building until we got the permanent sign. And then I will say, Mr. Adlerstein, he's getting ready to take a picture. Inside the Police Department lobby, while you're here, is a beautiful shadow box that Mark Melcher made, but he's not here tonight. I'll get a picture of Mark and the chief. It's full of patches, the chief's patch collection, so if you get a chance, take a look at that. All right, that's all I have. Thank you very much. And then we'll move on to Ms. Courtney's report.
City Attorney have a report?
Yes, he does. And he actually briefed me.
Just a very quick one regarding the Dr. Grantham case. And this is, after discussing with other attorneys and this and that, as far as the path forward, there's still no record of any estate being set up in Bay County. And typically, you would, we would, as we discussed in past meetings, substitute in the estate in place of Dr. Grantham, who has deceased. In the absence of an estate, my understanding of the proper procedure is to file what's called a caveat when we do it in Franklin County and Bay County. And what that does is at least an affirmative act that puts, if anything is opened in estate, if Dr. Grantham opens an estate, then the clerk of court has to notify us. So it's another layer, you know, as I've said before, it's my opinion and understanding of the probate law, that they are aware of our claim, so they would have to notify us if they open an estate. But obviously, it's a little bit nerve-wracking to keep having to check and check public records and look around, kind of searching for it in the event they did not notify us. But there's this process by which, I believe it's like $40 filing fee in each county, but we would file it in Bay County and Franklin County, this thing called a caveat, but then it would be a waiting game. If they never open an estate, there is, that case is over.
Okay, if you file a caveat, how long is that? Is there an expiration sunset?
I don't believe there's any sunset on it. So if an estate is ever opened, then the clerk notifies us, and we can make our claim and basically start over against the estate.
Well, it's, I would like for you to, just to move forward and do that at least, so that we can get an idea of, you know, if there is an estate ever opened, then we can decide what action we want to take. How do you all feel about that? All right, can we have a motion then to authorize the city attorney to proceed then with filing a caveat in both counties, Franklin and Bay?
Yes.
Make a motion to that, Greg.
Okay. Do we have a second?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then that motion carries. Do you have anything else, Mr. Hartman?
I do not.
Do you all have any questions or anything for the city attorney? All right, then, now we go to Ms. Court.
On May 29th, we did a walkthrough on the new hangar at the airport. We have a punch list. I think there's approximately 12 items on the punch list, so we're just waiting on the contractor to get over here and finish those items. Last month, we were notified, as the mayor said, that we were awarded the Scope Grant for Southeast Fifth Street and Southeast W.D. It was actually for $969,081. And I just received a grant agreement on email to Stephanie at 3:30, and she, they're asking that when we return the grant agreement, that we have a resolution attached to it. So I'm asking that we approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute the grant agreement. And Dan, you have a copy of this on your desk if you want to read the resolution.
Seat of Carabelle Resolution 0-2019. A resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a state-funded grant agreement project number 440334-2 with the Florida Department of Transportation to provide 100% grant funding for the Southeast Fifth Street, Southeast Avenue D paving project, whereas the City of Carabelle needs 100% grant funding to design, construct, and perform construction inspection and coordination for the paving project, whereas the Carabelle City Commission wishes to take advantage of the generous offer of the Florida Department of Transportation to provide 100% of the funding to make these needed improvements to the City of Carabelle. Now therefore be resolved by the City Commission and the City of Carabelle, Florida Assembly in regular meeting on June 7, 2019, that the mayor be, and she is hereby authorized and directed to negotiate and execute a supplemental joint participation agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation, a document necessary to receive funding from the Florida Department of Transportation as follows. Florida Department of Transportation participation 100% for $969,081. Seat of Carabelle participation zero. Total project cost $969,081. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be attached to the state-funded agreement between the City of Carabelle and Florida Department of Transportation when fully executed.
All right.
We don't need a motion on that.
I move to approve the resolution.
All right, and that's, we have that by Commissioner Melander to approve Resolution 02019 to execute this agreement. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries.
We were also awarded a conceptual approval for the artificial reef construction grant for $60,000, and that will be managed by the Organization for Artificial Reefs. And y'all may remember Alan Richardson. He came to you guys, and we put in that application on behalf of OR, and it was funded. I have added the DOT master duties to the existing restroom contract for $50 a day for weekends and holidays during the season only. So roughly between March and September, they'll go out and they'll do that five hours a day on Saturday, Sunday, and any holidays. Since they're out there cleaning the bathrooms anyway, it makes sense, and we already have an existing contract, so we just needed to add the duties to that contract. As a result of one of our wastewater operators resigning, the other two operators will be getting approximately eight hours of overtime temporarily until the position is filled. And I think the mayor was going to make a motion.
Well, I was just going to ask for you all to approve this temporary overtime for weekend coverage of the water and wastewater treatment plant operator vacancy. Now, the vacancies won't start till 12?
Till 12, I believe.
Do we need a motion? That's pretty much it.
No, we don't need a, we don't need a motion, but I just want to make sure that it's okay with the commission.
Okay, is that motion?
Okay, all right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Walden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a second by Commissioner Mathis. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries. All right.
As you're aware, we had two vacancies in the Police Department. The Chief Hunnings would like some new Lawrence Brandon from a part-time position to a full-time position. This position has been advertised, it's on their Facebook page, our Facebook page, it's been advertised on the police website, and Dan says that everything has been done, what's supposed to be done.
Okay, I think, do you all have, what do you all think about this? What do you think? That's fun. Since we just made a motion on the last one, I think, I don't have a problem with it, but I'd like to have a motion to go ahead and promote Mr. Brandon.
I move to approve.
Okay. Okay, so that's a motion to promote Mr. Lawrence Brandon, Officer Brandon, to full-time by Commissioner Melander, a second by Commissioner Walden. Is there any discussion?
Sorry, when we had talked about it, I, we had talked and did, that it wasn't a promotion. It seemed as someone said, I'm working 20 hours, now I'm working 40 hours.
I'm sorry.
So, no, 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 that's fine. We just want to say, if you look back at the minutes, you could get confused, saying, well, I mean, most promotions you have.
So that's to full-time?
So just from part-time to full-time.
Part-time to full-time.
All right, thank you for that correction. And that's for Lawrence Brandon, part-time to full-time. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries.
Back in, I believe it was April, John Lee Daniels, also Dustin Putnam, went for the MRT certification that can be used throughout the city for various jobs, not only just the water and sewer department, but any other contractors that we have in town that are working on Highway 98 that don't have an MRT certification. He can go down there and provide that certification for the city. And we are asking that he get a dollar increase for getting that certification, John Lee.
John Lee's been with the city for 16 years, and a couple of months, it'll be 16 years. He takes on the duties of safety coordinator, and he can be, with the MRT certification, he can be utilized anywhere throughout the city on any traffic problem that might happen with any type of crew that we have working in the city. So I would recommend that as well.
Are you motion to approve?
Okay. Okay, we have that motion to recommend, or to a pay increase for John Lee Daniels at $1 per hour by Commissioner Mathis and second by Commissioner Walden. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries.
And then I just wanted to let you guys know that we're still working on one project for the soundproofing, the boat ramp repairs, and the handicap ramp in the Coast Guard dock. All of these projects have been given out with the soundproofing, and the guy's supposed to come and give me an estimate, but the other two projects have been given out to contractors, which is waiting on the work to be done.
All right, thank you. Do you all have any further questions for Courtney? Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Keisha?
I just got a couple announcements. I gave everyone our good faith estimate from the property appraiser, a man about $4 million higher than last year, or $6 million higher than last year. Our July festivities will be July 5th at Dark Thirty, our fireworks show. That works out good. Our lights will be on the 3rd, the island will be on the 4th, and we'll be on the 5th again this year, so everybody can enjoy three days of festivities. Reminder, our meeting is moved from July 4th to July 11th at 6 o'clock.
Do you all have anything for Ms. Keisha? All right, thank you very much. Okay, so then we'll move to Mr. Russell with the novia.
All right, thank you. Our new scope project that's been covered, I'll start with our current FDOT scope project at Kio's Edition. That project, construction is substantially complete, and we're reviewing that for punch list items. That project's been a great success. Our Avenue B project, our CBG grant project, we're working through punch list items with contractor on that, and he has about 40 days to resolve those punch list items. There are nine items on that list. City Hall final payment request has been received, reviewed, and approved. There is some warranty work that is being taken place, I understand, tomorrow. And then lastly, I'll mention, there's a Landmark East List Station Rehabilitation Project that was put up for bids. We did receive two, and we are evaluating those bids with Charlie and Courtney. Are we happy to answer any questions?
Do you all have questions?
The grass on the sod looks real nice and dry. It's just the drought. Will rain help it?
I'm not certain that that grass is alive. In its current state, it would not be acceptable, and that is not an item on the punch list that the contractor needs to resolve.
I have some questions about the things and items that I see up there that needs to be corrected or finished or completed. It sounds like you have a punch list, which is not necessarily going to be detailed.
Sure, and I can eat with you afterwards, if you like, and we can go through.
I was unaware that now that the substantial completion, or the completion of the project, the date has come and gone.
That's correct.
Now, how does this 40-day bid end?
That's part of the grant stipulations, and we're coordinating with Fred Fox, and that's what we're being told by Fred, and also Patrick Howard at CBG.
Okay, okay, that's fine, as long as that's, you know, part of the agreement.
Yes.
Because I've got quite a few things, but I've communicated those to you, and I received a phone call from Ms. Kathy Brink today, and she's basically saying, and she doesn't have her sod here by the end of the week, she wants sod, she wants her whole yard sod, that she's going to buy the sod herself and put it down because she's got guests coming the 4th of July, and she wants her yard sodded, and she will bill a packet for the cost.
I'll be sure to communicate that to the contractor.
Okay, if we have 40 days. But there's a lot of other items, and I would like to see them give us a living sod out there on the steep areas, the steep hills on the corner of Fourth Street and Avenue B and everything.
Up to Third, yes, yes. And we've had several conversations about that with the contractor.
Okay, and then Courtney and I received an email today, it was a heated email from Ms. Christina Oxendine, and she is, you know, her first sentence is, "Okay, here we are again," exclamation mark, sent several pictures of water coming off Avenue B onto 11th Street, Ryan Drive, but it's not much different than it has been in the past. I mean, that's the same slope that was always there on Avenue B coming from 10th, that area. Doesn't appear to give, wasn't raised, I don't believe.
It's the same elevation, and I'll be happy to contact them. I know there were some other drainage issues along Ryan Drive and near, closer to 98, or between Avenue B and 98, that was discussed at one time. So I'll be happy to contact her and see what we can do if anything.
We need to, we need to have Mr. Hartman contact, and Courtney and I have talked about it with Mr. Schuler, and figure out who that roadway belongs to, you know, just digging a, that's 11th Street or Ryan Drive, or both.
And I did send our road crew out there after I received the email, and they went out and worked on it, and what they're doing is just a temporary fix, but it does seem to help.
Relieves it some.
So they can get some road crews.
No, no, Courtney did. And they go out there, y'all just like dig a trench and clean out the baffle box, or...
The pipe that drains Christina Oxendine runs up under her driveway. If you open that driveway up, it's going to wash her driveway out.
You mean if you open that pipe?
If you open that pipe up, it's going west, it's going right in the middle of her driveway. The reason we have not ever blowed it out. The only way to fix it is to put a pipe in over its west side, hook it to go to the river or down wherever you're going to take it.
I did go out with them on the last complaint, with the work with the Streets and Roads Crew, and that temporary fix that you just mentioned, we did that, or they did that, and that did relieve it temporarily. And it is moving the water, when you keep that temporary drain open that they created, it moves the water to the drain that William's talking about. But like he said, it blocked on the other end, but if you're leaving enough of that water that's accumulating to get it off of the pavement where it don't run across on their side.
Now, right in there is DOT property. Have you seen that sign right down there, right by their driveway? Is that drain coming out on DOT property, or, okay? No?
I don't know.
I don't think it is, but I don't know.
I've seen the river, not.
We have some old plans from the '70s, believe it or not, in that area. I don't know how accurate it is, but we may be able to take a minute and look at that and see if we can determine whether or not those pipes are connected.
Okay, and then also I looked at the plans for Avenue B on the right-way parking at the IGA, and there's supposed to be stripes there painted, six-inch wide stripes, six-inch wide stripes to make parking.
Parking, yes.
It's not, it's not storage for building materials. So I think if we made parking there, we might have parking.
Yes, striping is an item, and it's part of the punch list.
All right, okay. All right, anything else?
And I can talk to Courtney, obviously, outside of meeting on this, is if Courtney called Mike and asked, and asked me that category of parking to address it... And I can talk to Courtney, obviously outside of meeting on this, is if Courtney called Mike and asked him to address it and the fact that they're working, and I'll talk, I can serve a document.
Sure.
They addressed it in their meetings.
They have?
No. They addressed other road problems on county roads that are in the city.
They've said they're not going to deal with it?
I can add a little-
Because that's what any, give a little bit of background, sorry, is that I have had some discussions, they lasted for four or five months. Mr. Schuler asked for a list of county roads in the city. I provided it. He asked me what the basis for it was and I said the comp plan. Because that's what the state DOT and it's all been reported. The county did not object to it. And they all have county roads, we know their county roads. But the county obviously has limited funds, they don't want to spend money on our roads, even though you talk about this and we pay county taxes. So, but that's the extent of my back and forth with Mr. Schuler. And I would expect him, I mean, I don't think he's, he doesn't, that's fine, but I almost feel like the lawyer part of it would only kick in if they flat out, if the position, we're not doing, we're not messing with roads inside the city.
Commissioner Melton, they can fill you in.
Okay, we'll talk about that.
Go ahead.
The, I attended the county commission meeting on Tuesday. And the subject of Ryan Drive came up because of the COVID issue down at Branch, at Rowan Branch.
Not the same location, the same road?
It's not at the same location, it's further down the road. Anyway, Ryan Drive was, came up because of that issue with COVID, which there's been some work, temporary work done to it. But it's going to have to have a more permanent repair and replacement and correction, which is going to be costly. And it was implied by the county board that that was the city's responsibility. It was within the city, it was our road and it was our responsibility.
How can the county determine whether it's truck route or not? If you remember back then-
I do.
They refused, they said it could not be a truck route and they made that determination.
I, I, that's as far as I can go. I mean, the window, that's, I do share that. That's the information that I've received as a citizen sitting in the audience at the county commission. I can, I had no discussion, that was just brought up. Commissioner Massey is actually the one that brought it up because of the issues with the COVID, where he had county crews come over and help our work crew, road crews do the repair on the COVID, temporary repair.
Oh, so Commissioner Massey is here this evening?
And I was the only one. I was the only one that said it was a city road. Tommy was there and I've got them in the process of trying to get money to fix it for us.
They're going, they, what I understood, and correct me if I'm wrong, what I understood was they would try to assist the city in coming up with some scope money if possible. And also the costly repair that it was going to take, which was explained by the county road superintendent. And they never did say that the road, but the comment was made and it was implied that the road belonged to the city of Caravelle and they were going to have to take responsibility, was their exact words that was said.
Yeah, they did. And I told them they'd been, Prentice took care of it for years.
Yeah.
When Mr. Frank was out there, they took care of it.
So that's the reason why I stopped. It goes to a legal thing now, who owns the road.
Mr. Edwards' name was there and he's, he's agreed.
Exactly what said happened. Alright.
Yeah, I get what's going on now. Let me hear if I can.
Yes, sir.
I would like to follow up on one thing that Commissioner Mathis mentioned.
Okay.
And I had discussed it with Courtney. Also, the county road superintendent made the statement that the temporary fix that he has done, or our road crews and they have done, he said it may last a year and it may not. He said it definitely won't if we don't keep trucks off of it. And I suggested to the city administrator that we get some signs up at the entrance of the old truck route, Frank, where it used to come around, get some signs up that this is not a truck route. I personally seen heavy trucks go through there. I mean, it's odd. And they are, they're going through it versus, especially if they're traveling west on 98 out of Caravelle, they don't make that loop around Lake Riley Road, they come through Ryan Drive. And I suggested that we get some signs up to try to help alleviate the pressure on COVID. And while the county's trying to assist us in obtaining some scope money or assist all of us in getting that repaired done. Because the road superintendent says the heavy traffic, and naturally I think, Frank, that's what happened to it last time, is that in my opinion, correct me?
I don't know how many years ago, but I was assistant superintendent.
Right.
Prentice went on vacation and the road fell in. I sent a backhoe there and he made two scoops and the county commissioner liked to run us all off.
But anyway-
It's 10 over the 5, is what it is.
Yeah, that's what he says. And he was saying that if we continue to allow the heavy traffic on it, it's not going to hold up.
I was going to fix it.
Well, I live there. I live on Ryan Drive and yes, I know what's coming through there, day and night.
So basically, basically what I was saying that we could do within our powers, at least get some signs up in the city that says this is not a truck route. Our designated truck route now is Lake Riley Road and the ramp.
I think there's some signs out there, there were at one time out at Lake Riley, you know, the truck route. There's truck route signs out there, but once they get into the city, if we, they can't turn on, if they turn, go ahead and turn right on Three Rivers, then what? How are they going to, they've got to go up into Three Rivers somehow and turn back around if we don't let them. So we, we don't want them to get on Three Rivers in the first place. And we don't want them to get up, come down on, we don't want them in the city. They're not, they don't have business, basically. And if they come down on Tallahassee, it's going to tear that up worse than it is.
Well, I'm just suggesting that we try to alleviate a problem and not create more.
I know it.
And by doing that, by putting some signs up and asking our city police to try to monitor a little closer and possibly give a warning or two in the beginning.
Maybe to travel by word of mouth.
Exactly, get the word out.
Do we have a sign for that if, I think?
Sure there is.
That's your police officer.
I'm signing most of it. The truck traffic is local.
We're always aware, paying for stuff, we're just being nervous. And again, we're talking about two different local governments that are opposed to private entities and local government and all that sort of stuff. But there can be obligations that you, once you take on maintenance of a road from a private perspective that are binding by statute and kind of live on, you get yourself into a pickle by taking on responsibility that you may not have, but once you take on for a certain period of time, it's your baby, right? And before we take on any responsibility, let, I'm going to research that. This cannot be the first time this issue's come up. And I know I looked at it before, but really, I get to the bottom of it and I will talk to Mr. Schuler about it. Because again, you pay the city road taxes.
And that's the, that's the Oxendine issue as well. I mean, the Streets and Roads guys do a good job, a good job of making temporary repair. But if we get into some, some heavy lifting over there-
The city just doesn't have the budget that the county, that we don't have the, we can talk about our grants. They get grants that are that much bigger because they're one of 67 counties, not one of thousands of cities.
Well, that's the reason why I think the county board went ahead and took the action to try to look into some scope grant money to help with the situation, which is exactly what was said.
That'd be great, that'd be great.
But if they can do it.
If we start taking on some of those responsibilities, my concern is, and I don't have a legal basis for this yet, is if we take on responsibility, figure it this way. You have, I work, did work for Descent and it was a creative city, right? It was a new city that was incorporated. And so certain roads, when they incorporated, went from being county roads to becoming city roads. And that was partly due to incorporation, but you had like other roads that stayed as county roads. And I should be able to go back in time and look at some of that. I just have a concern that if a city takes on responsibility for a road, it may be that city's responsibility for all time to come.
Now, now, putting up signs, designating no truck route, that's not-
Yeah, I would not, I'm saying right now, and I'll get an answer hopefully here in a week or so. I would not do that. I would not do anything that deserves our authority over that road. It's been a, it's been a county road. I mean, every complaint we've ever submitted which went through the county, as well as it did us, designated that a county road, no one objected. Everybody, you know, Frank George from back in the day, they didn't want us messing with it. They wanted to handle it. So we want to be careful before we start putting up signage and telling people what they can't do on our road.
Mayor, I would suggest, I agree with, with the attorney in not taking responsibility. I'd suggest when he gets an answer, if he feels legally that we can put the signage there. And that recommendation is coming strongly from the county road superintendent to stop that traffic, that heavy traffic. That was his recommendation, because again, just repeating what he said, is if we didn't stop it, it wasn't going to stay together. He said, "No, it's going to stay together too long."
It ain't going to stay together no way. If you get a lot of rain, it washes it out from underneath.
That's right. Well, he described that, Frank, like you said, because he said part of it was all broken up. And that, yeah, rain's going to run out.
It washes underminds it, it falls in, whatever anything's on it.
So anyway, what I was saying is I agree to let the attorney do the, do his job. And if he feels comfortable with the signs, then he can let Courtney know what's happening.
Alrighty, is there anything else on our roads and to do with our engineer at this point? Okay. But we've got a lot of road work going on. I guess you all know it, we're going to have more. Very good. Okay, Ms. Tamara, forefront partnership on our advisory board.
Good evening, everybody. I want you to please mark your calendars. This year's International Coastal Cleanup is scheduled for September 21st from 8:30 to 11:30 and we will meet down at the Fishing Pavilion on Marine Street like usual. So even if, for folks who are going out to the beach this year because we're trying to coordinate there. And I was, I participated with the Florida Public Archaeology Network last week in their program to help museums develop disaster management plans in case of, not only in case of fires or hurricanes, but also in case of bug infestation or a water main break or all kinds of other things that can happen in museums. And they've, we're working on a program that at the end of the program, we'll all have a draft copy of a disaster plan to have on file for the upcoming year. So that was a very nice, it looks like it's going to be successful. To bring you up to date, if you haven't been by the old city hall in the last couple of weeks, you ought to stop by and just check out the front door. We were not quite finishing, finished with the trim work, the painting of the trim work around the front door. But it's a, it's a beautiful, a beautiful door and it's very secure. And we'll be able to then secure the building for the first time in many years. So it will help us with being able to get more artifacts from the state museum and other places because we will be able to have solid security on the door. Front door, back door have been done. And they're going to have the walkthrough on phase, this is phase five renovations. The walkthrough will be either Monday or Tuesday to just be sure everything's been done. And Courtney, you're always welcome and I'll let you know when it is. But stop by and check out the door. We're not, it'll look even better when we get all the right colors in the right places. Just to let you know, following up from your last month's meeting, the Crooked River Lighthouse did complete an application for a special category grant. And they were able to make all, compile all of the money that was required to do the cash match for that project. So it not only meets the number one criteria for the state for this year's money, but it also, because it's a national, on the National Register of Historic Places, it should fare very well. And the only other, these are really the only things I have to report to you.
Good, well, thank you, Ms. Tamara. And then the Economic Development Council, I know they met this month. Is there any report on that?
Yes, I have a report. The EDC man on May the 22nd, we appointed Kayden Barber as the chair and Lisa Mootson as the secretary. We've been in contact with John Hurst from St. Judd and he's agreed to sit on the board as the St. Judd representative that's listed in the bylaws. Our first official business was to send a letter of support from the EDC in supporting the interchange at Highway 65 and 90. And we will meet quarterly or as needed on the first Wednesday, with our next meeting being on August the 7th at 1:30.
Sounds great. Do you all have any questions or comments? That's good. And maybe as things move along, we might end up needing more. Alright, the Aviation, Caravelle Aviation Advisory Board.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Did you all hear my report? We're going to start the fence project on June 18th. The design engineer will be coming down. First, all our businesses to do a survey of the airport property. And then they'll get busy on building the perimeter fence. Last month it seemed like everything wasn't, we were having trouble out there. We had an electrical storm come through last month and it gave us problems with the fuel system and the main gate. They had to do several repairs on both systems, but they're both operational now. Runway taxi lights, they're all working. There's a wiring that's still exposed, it needs to be buried. When the electricians come to do that, we're going to talk about possible lightning resistors for that area around the gate. And it seems like this is an ongoing problem out there. As Courtney said, the main hangar, we did the walkthrough of the new hangar, I'm sorry, and waiting on the final inspection from the, from the county. I believe that's been scheduled. Do we don't have a timeframe?
The county building official called Mr. Smiles who did the permitting and he's going to come over and do the inspection. So he's got that scheduled. I'm not sure when, when he's going to come.
Okay, so we've got people waiting to rent the hangar. As soon as we get the certificate of occupancy, we can do that. And the punch list will, will follow through, I guess, after that. The other thing I want to just mention was I want to thank the Water and Sewer Department for the open house last Saturday. It was interesting to learn how the city gets safe drinking water and how the wastewater is processed while protecting the environment. Justin gave us a tour of the water plant and Charlie gave us a tour of the sewer plant. They are both complex systems and it takes a lot of teamwork to keep those and the environment safe. The systems are mostly run by computers, but whenever there is a breakdown, the employees have to operate everything manual, manually. They have a lot to, a lot of knowledge of what is required to keep things running safely and at any time, day and night. They were all doing a great job out there and it's, they went through what they have to do in the event of the computer breaking down and not operating. And it's pretty complex and a lot of on-the-job knowledge to make all the switches at the right time to keep everything safe. Doing a great job and thank you.
They are, and thank you for that comment. Yes, it is technical. And Charlie and I talked about, the next day or so, we talked about possibly having a field trip for some science or chemistry students out, out to tour both plants. I just wanted to ask you, Mr. Sullivan, have both, that's okay, have both loadings been lifted then?
Yes, yes.
And then is the Metro Electric, are they going to be able to provide a wiring, a drawing of the system, the wiring?
They're going to draw all the, all the repairs in the wiring that they have found out that they know of. They're going to write down for us.
Okay, alright. And then I'm just going to make note to the commission that today is three months since Mr. Kathy said that he would have the hangar completed in three weeks. And so we're still waiting on punch lists.
Right, and we're about $7,200 of loss rate so far since the final, from the completion date last year.
Completion date was the end of March last year.
Tim, just a tidbit of info. I guess that ground out there has a lightning attracted in it when Forestry filled that facility.
Yeah.
Had a lot of issue with lightning hitting every, every time the storm came up. Had a lot of issue with lightning hitting every, every time the storm came up, the electronics. Spent a lot of money on additional grounding of all the electronical equipment over there at the facility to help alleviate that because it was knocking radios out, knocking power out. Lightning just was getting that facility every time it came along.
And lightning does seem to attract a certain area like that. You know who I could contact over there to see what they, what they've done?
Me? I'll talk with you about it later.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah.
All right, very good. Thank you for that information. Okay, so then next up is the Terrabell HR Committee, Mr. Magnum, Tom Magnum.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hi. The Human Resource Committee met on May 22nd this past month. Our first order of business was to talk a little bit about how the, the evaluation process was going when it was in progress at the time. And both Courtney and Charlie and Chief Hunnings talked in a very positive manner about how that was going at the time. And it, it was a nice discussion because it raised a lot of the issues that, and some of the queries that happened when, when you, people go through that evaluation process together. So, I think the committee was pretty, pretty pleased and pretty impressed with the way things were going. The next thing we discussed was the, was the specifications package. That was, was actually, did not pass at the May meeting. And we went over point by point, the reasons stated at the, at the City Commission meeting in May of why that, that didn't pass. That particular document didn't, didn't pass and didn't get approved. And the committee realized that there were things on that document that needed to be changed and needed to be addressed. And indeed, that's what we did. I took the liberty of writing a, a new document on that based on what a lot of the information that was on the previous document that we, we presented for the April meeting, no, the May meeting, based on the motion that, that the commission made in the April meeting. And also, keep it in mind, all the things that were said at the last meeting about why the document didn't pass. So, I could, I presented that to the, to the committee at the May 22nd meeting, and it was thoroughly discussed. Some, some minor changes were made. And Courtney retyped that document, and everyone on the commission should have a copy of that tonight, I assume. Is that right?
They do. I asked Courtney to give them a hard copy and to email. So, they should have been able to review it.
Okay, and so, that's kind of where we stand right now with that. And I know we're going to discuss it as an agenda item later on in this meeting. The other thing that happened at this, the May 22nd meeting with the committee was that we put aside June 12th as a possible meeting date in the month of June, really depending on what happens to that specifications package at this meeting tonight, and just if there will be any work for the committee to do. The committee is still intact and ready to, to help those transition to a consultant, and, and the committee will communicate with each other about that June 12th meeting. And we will meet if, if needed on that date.
Very good. Anything else? Do you all have questions for Mr. Magnum, anyone? All right, we thank you for your report.
Thank you.
And don't think about disbanding yet. You all have done a great job and have saved us a lot of money developing the, the job descriptions, so we appreciate you. All right, then, do we want to take a recess now, or do we want to move into new business to tackle item one? Or tell me what you all feel, commissioners, please.
I'm with you guys. I'm with you guys.
Okay, well, we could, we could, all right, we'll keep going, keep going now and see how this one goes.
Yeah, you can.
If we need to take a break after item one, we will. Okay, so, new business, item one. Discussion of possible action concerning hiring a Streets and Roads Superintendent. And the open, the open position was advertised in-house for one week as designated in personnel policy, correct?
Yes.
And then we received a resume from Mr. Puttenel, and I requested you to circulate those via hard copy and email also.
I don't think I need the hard copy, I sent it out email to everyone.
Has everyone had a chance to review that, that resume? Okay, and now just let me say something before we make a motion. If a motion is being considered regarding promoting from in-house here tonight, would that motion include the recommended pay increase? Or would it be preferred by the commission and the attorney to have a separate motion for each item? A motion to promote, if there's going to be one, I can't say. And or, and a motion to regarding the wage? Would that be together in one motion, or would that be in two motions?
It can certainly be together in one motion, but if there is, if there's, whoever makes a motion can combine them or separate them.
Okay, all right.
I made the motion to hire Mr. Puttenel and give him $17 an hour.
Okay.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mathis and a second by Commissioner Allen to, you want to promote Mr. Puttenel. He's hired now. We want to promote, we want to promote, to promote Puttenel. Discussion.
Just a second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, now, I will say, I'm going to go ahead and say it. $17 an hour will promote him $9,526. That's, that's a, and I've said this before to one of the other gentlemen that are in here right now, that's a substantial increase. And we, we need to do that with care. We need to make sure that we're not harming the morale of the rest of the staff. That's, that's a substantial increase. Right now, well, that's a $10,000 increase, basically, from $12.42 per hour to, to 17. So, we just want to make sure this is, this is the right thing that we're doing. We want to be able to, I mean, I've got two police officers right here, the chief and Officer Polk. How long have you been here, Officer Polk?
Four years.
Four years. Have you received raise?
No.
Okay, so this is what we're looking at.
I just want to say, I just want to say something. This is not a pay raise.
I know, that's a promotion.
This is a promotion. There's a lot of difference between a pay raise and a promotion. Previous roads, streets superintendent made $20 plus dollars an hour. I think we're getting a bargain at 17. That's just my opinion.
All right, that's fine, that's good.
That's just my opinion.
Now, the, the previous superintendent was here, has been here since 2002 or '03, or so, has, has quite a few years.
Yeah.
So, you just want to make sure we're doing the right thing. Okay?
Well, that's the reason we have the commission, we live it on it. I'll live whatever we do, just my opinion.
I want to see an email address set up for Mr. Puttenel as soon as possible over there. They have internet. And he needs, if he's going to be, if it works out and he's promoted, he needs to be able to communicate with email, just like the rest of the supervisors, and communicate with vendors, just like the rest of the supervisors. I want to see inventory spreadsheets completed on the Excel program, not by hard copy. There needs to be, the security cameras need to be set up over there, just like was planned, and they have not. The poles are in place. There's, there's inmates coming and going over there, you know, several times a week. And we need to have security and surveillance, just as, as we had planned, I don't know, maybe a year ago. The, there's going to be an oil recycling station there that's provided by the county right there at Seven Street at the entrance to the Streets and Roads Yard. And we may have public coming there and dropping off, or not, just like they do at the recycle bins, you know, not operating right. And if we can get a security camera kind of looking towards that way, we'll be able to, you know, get an idea if they're not recycling their oil like they should. So, that's, you know, they need that as soon as possible. That, I'm understanding that office building y'all set up over there is open limits to inmates?
Yes, ma'am.
And you have a laptop, is there a laptop available over there?
Yes, ma'am, it's older. It's an actual, an old police laptop, come out of one of the cars, I've been using it.
Okay, all right. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries.
I would like to say, Mr. Puttenel is currently using Excel, and he brings me the disk, but he will be asked to email.
All right, all right. I want him to have an email address as soon as possible. Okay.
What's that, about one third back here, though?
All right, so we can move forward then. We don't, we need a ra, a break? All right, look, do we need a motion for all of these items that I just mentioned that, or we're going to just, we're going to do that as directive?
I'm doing my strategy, I got you set up an email address. Have the, the 20 on Excel. Get the security cameras set up, then.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dustin. Okay, item two, discussion of possible action regarding request for proposals, the advertisement specifications package recommended by the HR Committee. And everyone has a copy of that, and you all get to review it.
I am, thank you.
This part, Mr. Magnum was discussing.
Yes.
I think we went over this last month and failed.
Yeah.
It's re, it's, this is a new version of it.
It's revised, it's revised, and it's good, it's good. Thank you all for working on it. Thank you, Mr. Magnum. Now, I do have a couple of little somethings I'd like to add to it. One of them now, I'm just going to tell you that I have only recently learned that one of our hourly employees are, is, I only know of one at this point, is earning comp time. And in our personnel policy, comp time, the way it reads in our personnel and policy, hourly employees get overtime, they don't get comp time. And the comp time is reserved as a benefit for the salary employees. So, under number four, and, and, and I, at last month, I talked about the training, that we had not, in our original motion, not to have training. But after I realized that comp time is being allowed for an hourly employee, I think maybe our supervisory personnel do need some training. And training on employment interviews, as you have, corrective actions, issuing verbal and written warnings, presenting evaluations, interacting, enacting grievance procedures, and enforcement of the personnel policy. I'd like to, I'd like to add that into this list right here. Training on enforcement of the personnel policy. And then I'd like to add a number seven to it, if, if you all agree, that the HR professional consultant will consult one-on-one with the employees if they want to, and with commission members if they want to, on a one-time basis. Not, you know, back and forth, if they're here doing their study and their analysis, you know, if you keep coming back and forth, they're going to charge. But if, for instance, when we have our CPA come in once a year, I come in and consult them one time. I bring any concerns or say what's going on, you know, good, bad, or ugly. And it's, it's fairly confidential. And if, you know, if the employees want to come in and have a confidential discussion with the consultant, I think it would be good. And I think it would be good if the commissioners could do that. So, any comments? I'm looking to Commissioner Melander.
I'm, I'm listening to you tonight.
Okay, and I made a, I made a revision for you.
No, I heard you laughing.
Okay, okay.
Do you have that in writing, so I can make sure?
Yeah, well, if they approve it, if they approve, because we've got to approve it in the first place, so.
What we need?
Well, what we need to do, we need, if you, if you want to, if you approve of the core recommendation that they have, which I do, but I have two items that I want to add to it. If you, if you approve of that, or if you don't, you know, just, just say.
So, you want a motion to approve that with addition?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, all right. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Walden to approve the HR recommendation specifications as presented with the addition of the enforcement, person, enforcement of personnel policy under number four, and to include a number seven that reads the personnel, the professional HR consultant will consult one-on-one with staff members and employees on a one-time basis. And that, I have that for you too, if you want. And that's by Commissioner Walden, and second by anybody?
I'm sorry.
Okay, second by Commissioner Allen. Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries. And I have one more item under this, this, this topic. And I just, I just explained that I had learned that one, someone, one of the hourly employees is getting comp time. And so, comp time in, in our personnel policy, that is the most recent from February of 2016, it says compensatory leave may be granted, granted to a salaried employee if the city administrator determines the leave will not be unduly disrupted to the department. And it says compensatory leave may be accrued in six-month increments, and then it goes on to tell, you know, from January to June 31st, it must be used. So, it's got a definition there on how it's used. The personnel policy as it is right now does not provide for comp time for hourly-paid employees. Salary employee, in my opinion, does not mean hourly-paid, being paid for the actual hours' work. Comp time is a benefit of accrued time and a half for each hour worked, I'm assuming over 40 hours. I, I think that's the way we do it here, I don't, I don't even know that part, which may be granted to the salaried employee if it won't disrupt work. Not the hourly employee. The hourly employee, they, if they're needing to work overtime, the way I'm understanding it by personnel policy, they're going to be paid overtime, at the overtime rate. So, back in April of 2018, Commissioner Melander, you motioned to direct the city administrator to begin enforcing policies in place, including the charter. And Commissioner Allen seconded, and all were in favor, and the motion carried. At that time, I thought the term current, you know, current policies, I thought that included the personnel policy. So, I'm requesting a motion now for clarification to direct, same, same wording, but a little bit extra, to direct the administrator to begin enforcing and upholding the current policies in place, including the city charter and city personnel policy. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have that motion by Commissioner Walden.
Second.
Okay, and a second by Commissioner Melander.
Isn't that the same motion that you stated that I've already done?
Yes, sir, but I added.
Oh, that we have.
I added the word upholding, and I added person, city personnel policy, to enforce the city personnel policy. And, you know, this is all, I'm going to have discussion. This is all we have to go on right now. And when I refer to the personnel policy, it's all I have to go on. If we do work out that we can hire a professional consultant, the personnel policy may change, and that's, that's all we have to go on. That is our guidebook, that's our handbook for the employees, for the That is our guidebook, that's our handbook, for the employees, for the supervisory staff, for the administrative staff, and for the commission, and for the public. And if we can't refer to it, know what we're looking at, and understand that this is what we can all expect, it's not good. So, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. Thank you all. Do we want to move forward? Y'all let me know when you're ready for a break, okay?
I'm ready for a break.
Me too.
Alright, then we're, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, which turns into ten. Okay, we'll re-adjourn this meeting, June 6th, 2019, in Carrickville City Hall. Item three, discussion of possible action regarding advertising for requests for proposals from the human resource professionals. Okay, so we agreed on our specification package that we would send out to advertise, and so now we're, we're discussing on, do we want to send out an advertisement for requests for proposals? Won't cost us anything, but the ads, they give us an idea if we can afford to do that. We, we need, we do need help. They could help us with, they can make some meaningful revisions and additions, and they would have employment laws, quick access to federal and state employment laws that we don't have, and quick access to policies, benefit packages that are used in North Florida and other cities that are our size, or similar to Carrickville. And it would help, help get us on a better path. So, I feel like we need to try, to see if we can reach out to a professional, see if we can figure out if, if they, if it's something that's in our range.
See if we can afford it.
Yes, if we can afford it.
There's nothing binding, right?
No, what would be binding would be the fee for the advertisements.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
And, and I would like to see it in the, in the Tallahassee Democrat, the Panama City News Herald, the Times Union, and Jacksonville, that kind of thing, so we could, you know, really reach out to some professionals. What, what do you all think?
I mean, it's just. Oh, it's still, I, I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Walden, and a second by Commissioner Mathis, to advertise. Do you, I just named, I just suggested some, I'm having discussion now. I just discussed or suggested some newspapers. Can we advertise in those newspapers? Y'all have another idea where you wanna go.
That's fine. That's my thing, I mean, around this area, you know? Yeah, if somebody.
I mean, is the Times Union too far away? Is there some other?
That might be a little too far.
Is there some other newspaper? We would advertise in the, in the Apalachicola Times, Mr. Adlister, but we, we just don't know that there's a, a human resource.
We're connected with the News Herald, that's why. And, so.
I think the further we, the further we reach out, the more costly it's gonna be.
Uh-huh, from the professional, from the firm, because they'd have to travel here.
That's correct.
What, what do you think about just Tallahassee and Panama City?
That'd be fine. We could do this, and it don't get nobody, we can go out. I think further turning us to the.
And I know there's some in Tallahassee, I know. Alright, any other, any other discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries to advertise in the Democrat and the News Herald. And the Times? Uh, no, not the Times. Is that right, Jim?
I don't think so.
No, there's no one here.
I don't count it.
Okay, then, we're under old business. Discussion of possible action concerning planning and zoning recommendations to amend the LDR regarding R5 and C1 zoning. And will, one of the, either Ms. Keesha Courtney or Dan tell us what the P&amp;Z board has recommended for us?
I can take a quick shot.
Who just did that?
P&amp;Z, sorry, P&amp;Z recommended, very simple, heard from some of the folks that live in the Sun Sands area of the city, up 12th Street. And the recommendation from P&amp;Z was to, in the R5 district, to make a provision that would allow for mobile homes that are destroyed by an act of God to be replaced with mobile homes. Their concern was that if their home gets destroyed, that they wouldn't have the funds necessarily to do a stick-built home, and they, they wanted the ability to replace it, a mobile home with mobile home.
I understand that. But would you call that an act of God, or a natural disaster? Is that two different things, or what?
Same thing. And I can, I can come up with a broad description of, you know, wind, fire.
Alright, because I would want fire included, because a fire is not a natural disaster necessarily. It could be, you know, an electrical fire.
Truth, so that, and that'll, I'll make sure that the, that the definition is suitably broad, and we'll run it by the folks that attended, that had that concern.
Flood is a natural disaster. Yep, and Ms. Preston wants to speak.
For your question. Basically, I'm in that group, and it, it was, was it existing mobile homes? Existing mobile homes to be grandfathered in, and if they were destroyed by, you know, wind, hurricane, fire, anything that.
Yeah, a bomb, anything.
Yeah, anything that destroyed them, we could put it back with a mobile home.
Yes.
My understanding was, just 'cause we wanted to change it, we couldn't do that, which I wouldn't wanna do, but that was mentioned.
You mean change it, what do you mean?
Well, I guess, like, we have a mobile home right there now.
Oh, oh, I see.
And we said, oh, we want a new one? I think, wasn't that discussed?
Yes.
It had to be, that it was actually. It had to be those of us that had existing, that would get destroyed by fire, anything that destroyed it.
And I do understand that, because that's your home, and if something happened and your insurance coverage, or you might be self-insured, and you weren't planning to build a stick.
Like, we've been there 32 years, and, and we fought with the understanding, that's why we fought there. So, that was mine.
Yeah.
Problem as in, oh, wait a minute.
I do, and it's a good thing you brought it up.
Okay, I don't mean to butt in on anybody's thing, but I wanted to make sure that while we're doing it, so it doesn't have to be redone and redone, that it actually covered, we're gonna be grandfathered in.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Mr. Hopland, do you have anything to add to that?
Nope.
Are you satisfied, then, with, with that?
I'm perfectly satisfied, I plan to stay there at least 35 more years.
Okay, alright. Just trying to think if I'll make it that long.
That'll put me right about 120, so.
Okay.
But you wanna be able to replace it, you got.
Yeah.
Yes, he does. Do you all have any comments?
And that was only in the R5 document.
Okay. Is there, they, they, P&amp;Z made no recommendations on the C1 zoning.
Well, they already did the last one, that just said no.
No change.
No change, okay.
I would just add one thing, that the act of God thing just bothers me immensely. I don't think God does things like that, but it's gonna be a form in the, in the, you know, I know what it means. It means nothing to do with God.
Yeah.
No, it's all to do with lawyers. They'll put that around.
Maybe it's used.
Well, some lawyers think they're gods.
Alright, then, anything else, then? Can we have a motion to direct Dan then to draft an ordinance that amends the LDR table, 2.0, 2.01, to rescind allowable uses in the R5 and C1 zoning to include manufactured mobile homes, with the exception being, if an existing mobile home in an R5 zoning district is substantially destroyed by a natural disaster, or fire, or whatever it may be, it may be replaced.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Then I'll say it.
Alright, so we have that motion by Commissioner Mathis, and a second by Commissioner Melander. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? I'm looking at you all, okay?
No, I'm, I'm good with it, you, I think you covered it, that we can replace it in things if it gets destroyed, so I'm good. And I, I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome. Any, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries, and then we'll plan for this draft ordinance for first reading at the July meeting on the 11th. Alright? I guess so. We're gonna, we're gonna have this ordinance.
That's fine, I will have it, I'll have it ready.
Alright.
Yep.
Okay. Item two, Mr. Johnson. Discussion of possible action on transfer of office space property to the Landarc Village Association. And all of these other items were transferred, we've been over it, and this one, there's, we cannot find a deed for it, and we're gonna go ahead and make it like it was agreed to in the agreement, and get that deed done, and transfer to you all, and make it hold.
First, I'd like to thank my mayor and my councilman for giving me time to get educated on this. And after review and discussion with the board, we are in complete agreement with the city's action plan. And, well, and the other thing I would like to say is, I would like to give you all updated contact information with the, the Landarc Village Association, in case you find yourself in, in need of our assistance.
Okay, alright, thank you, thank you for, and, and, you know, we may need to let you know something that's going on with the board, for sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Make the motion, we proceed.
Okay, we have that motion by Commissioner Miller, Melander, and a second by Commissioner Mathis. Any discussion? Okay, I will say that there's, I have, I won't go over it, but I've got this whole list of items, documents, that were associated with that transfer. If y'all want me to read it, I will, but, I mean, we still, we're gonna be here till nine o'clock tonight. Okay, I won't read it, but I'm gonna give it to Courtney. We have it unfiled, if you don't, I do. And I would like to give them a digital copy of it. And if they want a hard copy, because it's a lot of paperwork here, they can come and pay. What do y'all charge for that?
10 cents a page.
Okay, yeah, let them come and buy those hard copies if they want to. But, so that they have a full package. Alright, then, so we have a, a motion by Commissioner Melander, a second by Commissioner Mathis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. You'll behold shortly. Thank you all. So, Mr. Hartman, then you'll need to, to do that.
Yep. I'll carry it on multiple occasions.
Thank you. Alright, item seven, discussion of possible action regarding use of city-owned property by the Landarc Dog Village Club. By the Landarc Village Dog Club.
What would you have for you, Mary?
I was at Kent Gordon Johnston. And they didn't serve toddies.
We have a representative of the dog there.
He's not here, Mr. Lawler is not here. But, you know, we heard from Ms. Susan Lynn of Landarc last month, and she, basically, she wants equal rights. If, if the city's gonna provide a, a dog park for select citizens of Landarc Village proper in the units, then she wants, and I saw her during the week, she wants equal rights, she wants the city to provide her, and, and she'll get together a group of people for the entire Landarc Village, golf terraces can use it. So, Mr. Lawler came, and, and he's, he did not have a contract, he don't have a contract. He had a letter, unsigned, that was like a, just a letter of request. And he said he made payments from 2012 to 17, but he, he said he had receipts, but he didn't bring receipts, did he? And he said he paid 10 years in advance in 17, but he didn't have that receipt. So, we have no formal lease agreement, no terms, no condition, no bond, no liability insurance. The Dog Club's not registered NPO. No conditions, I mean, they, they're, did he ever provide usernames or addresses this whole time? So, he did provide that, the names, last month. Dan has explained that because the commission allowed this use to begin with back in 2010, that now the commission must decide the path forward. And then you told me that the city can lease property to private individuals, and has done so in the past, and if the city wants to lease it for a dollar a year, then the city can lease property for a dollar a year if the commission wants to do it. But you said both parties could have a potential liability depending on the situation. And then you said we could do, had two choices. We could enter into a formal lease with Mr. Lawler, and the conditions and terms would have to be determined, and have a 30-day termination clause in there, and the city would pay you to draft that contract and deal with any other ongoing issues regarding the agreement. And then you said, or we could provide a 30-day notice to Mr. Lawler that the allowed use is terminated, and the city will retake possession of the property. That's what our superintendent, or sewer superintendent would prefer. I think that's what Ms. Courtney has, has said she would prefer. She's researching right now values of the surplus property that we have in Landarc. And so, there's a building on that property right now that needs to be.
Moored.
Yes. There's an operational power meter on that property that needs to be, we're paying for them to use power over there. Somebody wants to talk? Yes.
When you just mentioned the building that's gonna be torn down, if you do end up tearing that down, then you're gonna have to put a fence up on that side of the property, because the dog park is fenced in, and if the building goes, that's part of the perimeter.
Do you have to fence it in, if there's nothing there?
No.
But if they have a dog park, we'll have to fence it in. That's my guess, I don't know. So.
I say we terminate the lease, if our agreement, whatever it is.
Alright, we have that. Do we have any other discussion?
Yes, if it go along with Commissioner Mathis, I, I support going along with what staff recommends.
Well, I do too. You know, we, we could look at selling that property and using that. They need, they need a lot of infrastructure improvements over there, and that could just go towards their infrastructure improvements. Our agreement that we, that the commission signed back in 2008, when they took over the district, was any monies made off surplus land would go to rehab, towards any needs at the Landarc Water and Sewer Districts. So, we would just put it back in over there, that, in that area. And as, as Commissioner Melander said, it would just take the city out of the picture of providing a private facility for select few citizens outside of the city limits. Do we have a motion, then?
Yes.
Okay, we've got a motion to terminate the agreement, I guess, a verbal agreement, and a second by Commissioner Melander. Would we give them a 30-day notice? Okay, Mr. Hartman says to give a 30-day notice.
We're, we're, we should pop off.
Alright, and then we'll turn, maybe turn the power off over there at that time. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. Alright, now we have a public hearing, and it's the ordinance 471 regarding our flood plain to change some of the FEMA code requirements. And this one requires action, so would you like to read that for us, Mr. Hartman?
Yes, this is an ordinance, this is the Carrickville Board, and then the ordinance 457, the Carrickville Code of Ordinance is to document this flood plain management ordinance applying for applicability, repealer, acceptability, and effective date. And this is, I don't have the details in front of me, but it's, it's the recommendation made by the mayor previously to allow for, within the limits of what we understand is allowed by the state's government, the improvement of properties, including the amount and the annual, the annual amount, and it'll allow, hopefully, our park to revitalize itself without the restrictions that are placed now. without the restrictions in place now are stifling, so, renovation of property and that sort of thing, and this is in line with what some other jurisdictions would do.
It was from, it, it stands from Ms. Kisha going to the flood plane training, and she came back and reported to us, and that some of the cities are allowing the improvements to be done within a one-year period, and they take the fifty percent that's assigned to the back building value, and some of them had twenty percent, and so that's what, what we have talked about doing, and that's what this ordinance is. Okay. Alright. So.
This is second reading.
Yes, second reading, so we have action is required in this reading.
I know it's a doc.
Alright, and we have that motion by Commissioner Allen.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Melander. Is there any further discussion? Okay. I would, I would like to ask them, when would this, even though we're adopting it or enacting it, when, when does this start? When can these property owners feel like they?
It'll be effective upon adoption.
Okay.
It will be, unless we set it.
So anybody who's had permits that we've been tracking, will only go back to the year, and the ones that are three or four or five years old, will, you have to start fresh again. Do they need to be contacted, or are there very many of them like that?
Um, not, 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 it's close to their fifty percent, you know, there's just a few that was.
Like the White Kitchen?
Mm-hmm, that was close to the fifty percent.
Okay, well, you know, maybe this, there's a couple of properties, you know, in town that could sell, maybe this, this will help, help that too.
Most definitely.
Okay.
It's effective upon adoption.
Alright, very good. Thank you for bringing that information to us, Kisha. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any approve, oppose? Okay, then that motion carries. And it's time to adjourn, do we have a motion for that?
Yes, I'm motion.
Okay. Okay, that's Commissioner Melander, motion to adjourn, any?
Second.
Okay, and second by Commissioner Mathis. Thank you all, and we're out here about nine o'clock, any discussion?
Great.
That motion carries. Okay, thank you.